Hi Ronnie.
Good morning.
Seeing you every week here, that's getting quite often, isn't it? Wasn't just last Thursday or something?
Yeah.
We had to be meeting too at the concert that night.
Did you stay very long?
No, we left, I don't know, nine fifteen or so. So we're running back, shall we hobble back to the...
Yeah, I didn't stay very long. Trent stayed, but I went back home. We went back to the hotel on the shuttle. You're warm?
We got it. Yeah, it was, I think it's warm enough.
I'm tired. Alright, we can for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, also gonna read our district mission statement in partnership to the communities. The mission at the Dorf and Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible life members. All board members are present, as well as Superintendent Hunstead, our district guru, and welcome once a year, Ronnie. Ronnie came here. We always can, we're like, Ronnie's coming tonight, so thank you for joining us. Good to see you. I'm doing changes to the agenda.
We do.
No changes, we have a motion.
Some of them.
Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Nicole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Homehold comments, rebel recognition. Any, anything happening?
Quarter concert was fabulous.
Oh, it was fantastic.
Loved to ever get out of it.
Very much so.
I saw you Ronnie from a distance, you and Donna came in.
I saw you two up in the corner.
Yeah, did you, did you enjoy it? Was it worth driving in for? Did you stay for both of them or just the first one?
Right away, so.
Yeah.
Really had one person, family there, so.
Okay, well, I tell you what, Mr. Andreessen, kudos to him. I just can't believe 140 guys on that stage.
Yes.
My husband's like, is there a weight limit for the stage? I'm like, no. I don't want to hear if there's a fire code. We're all enjoying the season. We're gonna enjoy the music and all the kids impacted. So yeah, no, it was very good, so yeah.
And my candles during silent night, so we didn't burn the flames.
No. So yeah, I think it was very well attended.
It was.
Did anybody do the eight o'clock one? You did the eight o'clock? How was that one? Was that good too? There was like five different choirs?
Mike had sounded better than he does in the shower, I'll tell you. It's awesome, but they did a very nice job.
Good, good.
Now, if you say that I went to the West Aprils Jazz Band and the choir were wanting to give my thing.
Oh, yes.
Jazz band sounded, best I've ever heard it sound.
Joe said the same thing, he might listen a little bit, he said, they sounded gracious, really impressed. Kids, they just did a great job, and the choir was great too.
Yeah, wonderful. Is there any like breakfast with Santas this week or Thursday? Okay.
A lot of dress up days.
A lot of dress up days here and there. I think the staff here tomorrow, the middle school, they're getting hot chocolate, I think. I think the admin's going around here, middle school, high school, and serving hot chocolate to all staff.
Oh, that's amazing.
Thursday, there's something going out the end of the day there too for everybody. So, yeah.
Okay, nice.
Dress up days, yeah.
I have a shout out for Michelle from math. She's been fantastic. She's been allowed, I mean, not that she wouldn't anyways, but allowed the kids in early in the morning after workouts to help them with math, and she stays late, lets them in their room, and answers all the questions. And I, the kids like just really like her. At that time, I want to share, but I asked who wanted cookies to bring to their teachers, and he's like, oh, bring some for her, I really liked her. Like, for a teenage boy to bring cookies to the teacher, I thought was fairy telling, so.
Daddy daughter dance was, oh, yes, Sunday. Oh, amazing. So that was darling. Yeah, because it's pre-K, like three-year-olds, now to eighth grade, which I believe it was like...
It last year was like sixth grade.
Okay, yeah, so it wasn't as heavily intended with the older grades, but, you know.
There was 200 in some couple.
There was a lot.
I think there was 50 more than last year.
Is that what these, I think. And there was only, I think, four or six in each of like the seventh and eighth grade, so that they didn't bring a ton of extra.
Yeah.
To that group, that was all in the lower little people. Lots of sparkles.
Lots of excited kids.
They did craft, their craft, whatever.
Vendor show.
Vendor show on Saturday, and then they had the basketball tournament going through community. Becky from HR, April, she, she goes around to those craft fairs, and she said it was great for her. And so I asked Tracy today, I went, she goes, yeah, everybody, I sent surveys out, and they all asked, can you do it again? So she said, that's usually a good sign.
It's usually well attended, tell you just by the cars.
Yeah, well, and then they had the basketball going, so she said, yeah, parking in Dorf is, I don't know, some people say it's challenging. Anyway, but that was, yeah, well attended, and it went very well, I guess, so.
Good, glad to hear. Alright, let's move on to 6.1, truth and taxation report. Shannon's gonna move up to the...
Yeah, I gotta get closer because of that. The keyboard here likes to be close to the TV or the computer behind the TV, so. I'll do it here, then I'm gonna do a little share my screen. Hit that button, I'm imagining, there we go. Let it wake up, and then I'll back it up. So, obviously, every year, we need to have our truth and taxation meeting. The next slide, so obviously, it's today is the date, and you, here's our board members. And, sorry Ronnie, you had to be removed, and we had to put my gun there, so that was an update for me. Otherwise, you can see that, it's our team. And then this talks about that, so between November 24th and December 28th, after six or at six is okay, it says, and you can have it a regular scheduled meeting. So, here we are, and we have to do it annually, so we're following all the rules and all the things that are required of this meeting. Just so everybody knows, in the public who sets the school levy, most of it is preset by the state through the general ed formula, the capital projects, and this is all things that are available to us through state funding, through MDE. We have some say, obviously, in that, we don't have to levy the max, we can levy less and whatever, those types of things as well. But the general rule, like we have done every year, we levy the max, just because, no. You know, you can adjust that every year, so we can play that game, but we have. The other, obviously, the school levies are affected if you have a voter-approved operating referendum or bond, which we do, so. And this is the new change, so good news for the Dorf, Glen and Felton Public School. Our levy went down 3.3%. You can see, last year was at 4.38 million. This year's at 4.3, and now we're at 4.2, a difference of 144,000. We've reduced it, the levy, so that's good news. That's not typically what you hear. Municipalities have a different structure than we do, and when they're short, they just say, well, here's what we gotta levy the taxpayers, which you probably have felt a little bit in some of your communities or townships or county. School districts don't have that ability, we can't do that. So if we need to raise anything or do anything with it, we need to go to our taxpayers, and that's usually a year-long process of trying to get a campaign, right? It's interesting when school districts do that, you know, when we're talking, hey, we gotta add $20 for a $100,000 home or 40, for a $200,000 home and that. And yet, counties and cities, and they're structured differently, I totally understand that, where they get their funds from, but they have to do that all the time. And that's just a board meeting, right? And so, there's some, it's a different structure, but it's just, school districts, school districts don't have that luxury, we're so dependent on the state. Eighty, it's a little over 80% of our funds come from the state, and so, that's the case. Now, this slide, and I'm sorry, because it shows smaller when I do the presentation, so. But I'll share this with you guys too, so you can all have it. This just shows the difference if inflation, so this is our general formula amount of 7,200, just over 7,200, and this is if it would have followed inflation since 2003. So this is the inflation rate. So if that was the case, and I don't know, can I get this to look different? This is right in the middle of it, so. I apologize, I haven't worked with this system before, presenting, but it's covering it up. So, this next, this year, it's $1,200 short than if it followed inflation. So if the state said, hey, we're gonna give you the same rate as the inflation rate, here's what you get for money, for people. That's the difference right there. So the blue line says, if, since 2003, if inflation was tied to the formula, you'd be getting $1,200 more a kid, a student. Well, the average operating referendum in the state of Minnesota right now is 1,500 bucks across the state for all school districts. We don't have one. But the average in the state of Minnesota is 1,500. Well, you wonder why they came up with that number? Well, that's pretty much the difference between inflation and what we get. So, it's interesting when you break it all down, and that's how the average comes out. This one is just talking about school districts compared to other entities, cities, townships. And the blue line is school districts, and the red line is other entities, cities, counties. And that's the difference. That's what they've done, because they've had to, and the blue line is what schools have done. So, has it had an impact? For sure. Taxes have gone up in each school district. But not to the same relation as others have, so. I think, I thought this was important to show what a schools have had to raise taxes. Yep, no question. But non-school or those cities and counties have had to do it. And I get it, they've had a lot of issues too, they have to deal with inflation and those types, and their dollar comes from the people. Some comes from the state, but not proportionately the same, so that's where they are in a tougher spot that way. But you can kind of see that. Reflecting that, this is impossible to see, what I'll tell you is, this is our preliminary budget, because we have to show, we're gonna have our final budget in January, I met with Marcus again today to make sure our final budget would be ready for the second, the January board meeting, and it's going to be, so we'll have it all dialed in. This was our preliminary budget, because we have to show at least a budget for this year, and this shows a 62, $63,000 surplus. And so, that's what our preliminary was, our final one again will be in January. So if anybody wants to see what the school district's final budget is, we have a public meeting, second public meeting in January, we'll be able to show you. Okie doke, that's another requirement, we have to show the budget, and that's... What we got? Questions?
Ronnie, you got any?
Well, not really. Have you heard anything? There was some comment, I heard third-hand, that the state screwed up in setting the valuations for ag land. There's people getting 100% increase in their valuations.
Okay, so I personally haven't, well, I haven't heard it, or I haven't seen it personally, but I heard this from Morehead. Brandon Lunick called me last week and said, hey, we got people, are all fired up because their land values are all messed up. And I said, I hadn't heard that. Has anybody heard that or seen that?
Ronnie, have you? Somebody told me Sunday that one of the hearings, or Clay County one, or something, they must have heard it from, but.
Well, I think it came in the Morehead, Morehead's school board meeting potentially.
Okay.
Because, because Brandon called me on it and asked me if I had got any calls on it. I said I hadn't, and I hadn't heard that until he brought it up. And now you, you know, brought it up too, but have you seen it yourself? You haven't had?
No, because all of mine, the ag land is 45% increase in one year, the valuation, which means taxes are up about 25%.
Cent, yeah, yeah. It's just like homes, you know, you guys probably all said that in your house too. Mine jumped dramatically again. So, yeah, so like, there are logical ways to get more taxes out of you, right? Oh, your value of your home is way up, oh, you're setting up the accessory again, thank you. I mean, yes, I'd like to see my house valued that high, but I don't want my house valued that high.
Because my, my house overall says it's down 3.9% in taxes.
Your house, your homestead, or the house in one acre, or the, yeah.
The valuation went up, you know, 20-some thousand, but.
Okay.
But that's just because the ag land's gone up so high, it overshadows anybody's houses, so.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I just heard it last week from Brandon, because we had some people calling him on it. That's the first he had heard about it, so.
Sounded like there may be some new slips coming out or something, but I haven't officially heard anything.
Have you reached out to anybody? Jim Joy, or, yeah, I, no, I haven't. Yeah, go off to see, yes.
Any other questions for Shannon? Alright, let's move on to board committee reports here, so there was a budget committee. The last one, David, let him chair.
I sent everybody an email, but this board for the community, we discussed briefly negotiations with certified and non-certified staff. We expect the non-certified staff to probably start negotiations in February. I think our goals will be similar. We are looking at some other things with regard to the non-certified staff, just due to the different types of positions and... But basically, is, you know, trying to induce the incentive to not take health insurance, as we want to hold up our health insurance plans. Think that with the non-certified group, cleaned up a lot of issues the last time around, and hopefully this one won. Won't take as much time, I mean, there's, you know, rows back and forth, but it'll be good. We went over the construction budget, small on the left, and retained to pay on the roofs. Very close to being complete payments, and we're over budget on the project, about 490,000, and that includes about 100,000 in turnstries. We went over the fiscal year 2024 budget that you just seen, it's right around... Saw. Budget right now is around 19.5, with projected revenues of about 19.1. In addition, this revenue, the district looking at using restricted funds for some of those items of, where we can't use it. If you recall, we have a healthy restricted fund balance. Additionally, we have around $300,000 still in testor funds that we'll be using. And just, it's good to know, we're being very conservative when we're looking at revenue numbers. So, I think we'll be in a good place, and so we're working on, budget standard just went over. You know, our revenue is based on 1,525 kids, and so, we are looking, that's our projection, and right now, we're closer to 1,560 kids. So we expect to be a little over budget, we get more money into the... Unassigned, and we're just, we're trying to get that to about 1.9. Currently, we are at about, you're sort of, just short, so. This meeting's on February 12th.
Already signed for some safety specific?
Well, we're, that's one of the things we're talking about as we finalize our budget. Marcus, I have already started to talk about, what we need to make sure is we're using it for the unassigned areas, so we don't use the unassigned benefits. So we're looking at all those expenditures. So it's not like we're gonna go out and buy a new car or anything like that. We're gonna make sure we play within our budget, the way we have it set right now. So we're on a signed control, it's not like we spent it on something else. Does that make sense? Yeah. So that's what him and I are gonna dial in here in the next month, before we go to final budget, so.
Any questions on the budget? Great, as usual. Personnel committee.
We just met up. Personnel committee technically is, I think. So we did finish negotiations, and that's how we got to it, really good. Still, I think everybody was happy, and, you know. On the negotiation teams, it was really a good process. Current negotiations are not, we're looking at the non-certified group. That's probably gonna start in February. We're also looking at superintendent contract, we've gone over just some real preliminary numbers and looked at the contract. We just haven't had a real chance to talk to us, agree about that. A little bit looking at that, talked about some other things. Terms of positions and that we need to look at in the future, doing some things with some various positions. And just went, Ken just received administrative evaluations of principals. And it's being February 26th.
Any questions? Thank you, David. Thank you. DLT committee.
We met two Thursdays, two weeks ago, and I believe we went over priority. No, no, remember what number, by community connection?
Yep.
What it was?
Priority three.
Okay, and I feel like there wasn't a lot of parents in attendance, or we had our students there, which was great. And we talked about how our school is connecting with community. And the different ways that we're trying to do that with, for the students, speakers, bringing people in, talk about careers, career readiness programs, like work experience stuff. And then also, the board that Shannon, the foundation, thank you, starting the foundation and what, where we are with that, and just trying to get ideas of how to make a board for that. Because I kind of, I'm a head.
I'm just looking at your text.
Oh, perfect.
I guess the other thing we talked about was lunch issues.
I know, the students bring up, like, their concern, and their main concern is lunch. So we did discuss that in various ways, that it's being addressed, like, our lunch staff know that there's a problem, and they're trying to address it, so.
There's been, last week, something was implemented, that Shannon implemented with her staff, and we didn't have any issues last week with.
Good.
So she's requiring them to have some evidence, the before and after pictures, you know how sometimes that's really telling? And so they have to provide that to her, and she said, then, no issues last week. So that's part of, gonna be their practice for a little bit, until she can say, okay, you don't have to do that anymore, because you figured it out. So, a lot of new staff, so to defend them, there are a lot of new people that's been turnover, so they were trying to figure it out too. Some of that has happened because of that, others has happened because of some decisions they had made that she's making some adjustments with, so, yeah. Like you did, David, I knock on wood, those things are moving in a better direction as well, so, yeah.
Alright, and then act two, I'm gonna add, I'm sorry, so we had a D, activities council met last... Yeah, last week, last...
Thursday, Wednesday.
Wednesday morning, last Wednesday morning, Shannon and I were both in attendance for that, and just talking about people want to start doing advertising, yeah, that's great, they want to do advertising in our... What's it called? Programs, I can't think, I was like, brochures? But anyway, and just like, you know, what direction do we want to go in with advertising in our gyms and our spaces and stuff like that? And I think we're all at a consensus that we were fine with, you know, doing advertising in the program, but we're not sure we want to start putting advertising stuff up in our gymnasium. You know, we really like the look and everything, and nice it looks in there, so. So talked about that, talked about just possible record boards going up in the hallways, it to all conference plates. Talked about, there's people in our community that would like to use a weight room. How would that look, and what, what will we have to do to make that a possibility? So just some early discussions on that, but, yeah, I think, you know, Katie doing a great job of getting, you know, community members to, to come to that, so that was good, and, yeah. Other than that, I don't, I don't think too much.
Yeah, one of the other things we talked about, and I shared it with in the weekly update, is the cleanup after the games.
Oh, yes, yes, I've heard about that, yes.
No, and I think it's nice, so our athletes are gonna probably have some conversations. The coach just said they would talk to their athletes, maybe they could start that, even underclassmen helping clean up the leechers right after the game. And if, it's happened in my previous school, and once the kids started doing it, then people go, oh, well, you know, they all clean up better, right? And then it just saves, I mean, it's an easy hour, maybe two savings of our custodial staff, right there. And it happens within 10 minutes, 15 minutes, so.
And putting the chairs, putting the chairs up.
Chairs away, and just walk out of leechers, and we're done, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, that's one of the things they talked about, that the custodians, they need to wheel down, hey, here's the big dumpster, or here's the big garbage. So it'll make it a little bit easier to, boom, right there, instead of... I picked it up, but I gotta bring it home, yeah. Yeah, it needs, yeah, needs more attention for sure, so, anyway, yeah.
Let's move on to 6.2, Superintendent Wood.
Yeah, so I have it up there, I don't know, I, I think I'll just stay here. The strategic plan, I have it, unless you guys want me to show it, but the one thing I want to do, as you look at it, and it's, because it's a public document, it's on our website, you can go to it anytime, it's constantly being updated. The one thing I would say that, I don't know if the word proud of is the right word, but when you open it up, doesn't matter if it's priority one or six or whatever, what's going on? All the stuff that we have on the far right, which is evidence of something we've done or in the process of doing, or want to start, there's a lot of green over there. And just starting it, and just getting going, had a lot of administration, a lot of staff, people involved in creating something special, right? And so, it's, you can go into it, you can see what's happening. So to Brittany's point, it's, the last one was about communication, and how are we getting people in the building? And it's exactly that, during the study, all now in the high school, they're bringing in speakers all the time to show, you know, whatever, that's an electrician, it's, I'm actually gonna speak to some students that want to go into education in January, after the break. So it's, it's cool, it's connecting to real people that are doing real jobs, and then talking about, what education do I need? What's it gonna cost me to get that education? What's a base salary that I should expect then, once I complete this degree or this job, or get into this job or this field? So, it, it's just, it's nice to see, it's constantly growing, because we're bringing in different people, right? So that's just an example of the communication. Same with the curriculum, and trying to make more electives and more opportunities for kids. We're already seeing some things that have benefited that we added, and there's some definite tweaks that we still need to make, but it's just moving in a better direction, right? Here we are today, we want to be better tomorrow, and that's, if you look at our strategic plan, it's, it's developed on purpose from the district leadership team, the school board, and in the district. And it's, that's what it's supposed to be. And I just am really happy to see the, the investment of people put into it, the time they put into it, to take it seriously, we talked about, I told my admin, it's never gonna go away. I will be on it every month, we're gonna talk about my admin meetings, and we're gonna make sure what happened now, what's, have you done it, have you added to it, you know? Because it's our connector to the community, whether they look at it or not, whenever you need something, you guys as board members do it, you can always go to it. Say, well, let's check, right? And you can have them check, and you can go there and say, well, here's what's happening, here's priority one, what's happening? And you can see what's happening, and you can click on it and have evidence. And I think that's very important for our community to check on us, and for you to have a voice too, because you don't, that here, you got your own jobs, right? And then all of a sudden, someone's gonna hit you up in the community, you go, well, I know we talked about that, let's see. And so, I guess that's the message that I think is very important for me to share with us. The other thing is, in the strategic plan, ironically enough, is that in December, the superintendent's supposed to give an update. And so this week, I will be sending a district guide to the whole community, an update of kind of how the district's doing. So, on the strategic plan, it was, it's gonna be in the fall, so the welcome back, kind of, here's where we're at. Now I'm gonna do it in the summer, I think, between March and then in the summer. So, this week, I'll be sending something out, just kind of a little bit of a, what's going on in the district, and what's happening. I don't want it to be a novel, so I need to be careful, so I don't say everything, but I want to make sure I point out some key things. And then you always worry about, oh, shoot, I forgot to talk about the Johnsons, you know, they did this thing, you know? So, I want to be careful how I say it, and when I say, how much I say it, but, so look for that this week as well. So that's kind of the strategic plan, I guess, if there's other questions from you guys. Remember, you can always go to that site, or the school website. Enrollment updates, that's good news too, David said our budget was set at 1525. Our current moment is 1567. And so, that's up a little bit from the beginning there, and that's... And so that's up a little bit from the beginning there, and that's, uh, I think that's kudos to kind of what we do as a district, or what we're trying to do. Yeah, so optimistic there, and really happy to see that number.
Enrollment numbers tend to dip up this time of the year, or?
Again, uh, we just had some additions, so. Yep, yeah, um, so our A L P, remember that was a part of our strategy, and there's sixteen kids in that. So that's, that's a big deal, yeah. So, yeah, and, you know, we had a, so we had the bookends a little bit, right? The A L P is the high school piece that we wanted to add, to make sure we're supporting those families, those kids, um, that are get lost sometimes. We also started our daycare, and I'm hoping that, you know, our preschool and then our kindergarten numbers, and that generates that in, so. There's some strategy there, right? And there's some thought process to try to help create, uh. Sustainable, good, strong numbers for our school districts, so, yeah, so that's very good to see, um. Uh, M R A vote, there was an email I sent, and I already talked to Lindsay about it, so we're gonna place that vote, and I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget. Because it's due by the end of the month, um, and that's just for the M E, M R A board, and so we'll do that, and. I thought I'd keep it simple, because I talked about the truth of taxation and that, but, questions for me? Merry Christmas to everybody, so that's the community's D G F, Merry Christmas. And happy new year.
Yeah, and happy new year. All right, in interest of time, I know we have concert goers here, so we're gonna keep moving along here. To make sure everybody gets there on time. Uh, approval of our November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David, all those in favor say aye. All right, consent agenda, claim for a council, Laura.
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you, also included in your, um, packet is your monthly budget report, and we're also approving the reservation of Caitlin Bushka. Your professional effective December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. New and finished business, nine point one, this is our extra board bills check run, this is something we do every year. So we're, um, this would be to approve an extra check run on December twenty-seventh for the F Y twenty. Is it supposed to be F Y twenty-four bills or twenty-three?
It should say twenty-three, I would say, because we're not in twenty-four yet, or why are you, oh, is this not proven for next year?
Well, we're in fiscal year twenty-four.
Oh, we're in fiscal year twenty-four.
Fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, sounds good.
Everybody understands why we do this, right? Because we only have one board meeting this month? I just wanna make sure, okay.
Yes, all right, do we have a motion? Uh, second?
Second.
Second, I agree, any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, nine point two, this is a certified final levy. Um, do you have that emotion, or is Laura have it over there?
It's on my presentation, and, uh, is it in our board packet? So there it is. Uh, the official final number was four million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Say that one more time.
Four million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Down one hundred and forty-four thousand.
Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. This is, uh, nine point three is a resolution establishing combined polling places. Let's get a motion, and then a second, and then Amy will read the resolution, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? All right, take it away.
Okay, pursuant, pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a regular meeting of school board of independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four. The Winton and Felton Public Schools was held in said school district on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock P M. All members were present. Uh, member David Hylerson introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution established, establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designated hours during which the polling places. Will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of statewide election. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four, state of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section two oh five eight point eleven, the precincts and polling places for the school district election. Are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district? Which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part by the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section two oh five eight point eleven. The board may establish a combined polling place for self, several precincts for school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections, not held on the same day as the statewide election. Precinct one, the Dover Community Center, seven oh nine, First Avenue Northwest, Dover, Dover, Minnesota. This combined polling place serves all territory in the city of Dover and Morehead Township, precinct one, that's located in the Dover Thelton School District, twenty-one sixty-four. Precinct number two, Glendon Community Center, two twelve Pertridge Avenue, Glendon. This combined polling place serves all territory in the city of Glendon, Spring Prairie Township, Mullen Township, Glendon Township. Riverton Township, Elmwood Township, and Elkton Township, that is located in the Dover Thelton School District, twenty-one sixty-four. Precinct number three, the Felton Community Center, two fifty-three, Sixth Street, Felton. This combined polling place serves all the territory in the city of Felton, Holy Township, Morgan Township, Biden Township, Felton Township. Regness Township, Hagan Township, King Township, and George County Township. That is located in the Doris Flannan Felton School District, twenty-one sixty-four. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes two oh five eight point oh nine, the polling places will remain open for voting. For school district elections not held on the same day as a statewide election between the hours of seven o'clock P M and eight o'clock P M. The clerk is directed to file a certified copy of this resolution within the county auditors of each of the counties in which the school district is located. And whole or in part within thirty days after its adoption. As required by Minnesota statutes two oh four B sixteen, subdivision one A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written order. Of new polling place locations to each affected household, with at least one registered voter in the school district, two school district polling place location has been changed. The notice must be non-forwardable, notice mailed at least twenty-five days prior to the election, or prior to the date of the first election in which it will apply. And notice that is returned as undeliverable, must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor. Who shall change the registrant status to challenged in the statewide registration system. A motion for the adoption of this resolution was duly seconded by floor item, and upon vote being taken thereon. The following voted in favor of this resolution.
All right, is Amy heard, we have a motion by David, a second by Laura, this will be a, uh, well-called vote, Laura. David? Amy? Myself, aye. Nicole? Brittany? Micah? All right, resolution of processes. Nine point four, this is a non-certified contract for Jerika Charbonneau, her professional class two, step five, effective December first, we have a motion. Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Micah, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Nine point five is a certified country for, certified contract for Kelsey Bosler. Her professional class two, step four, effective January second, do we have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Micah, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Nine point six is a non-certified contract for Blair Peterson, custodian. Class two, step two, effective December eighteenth of this year, do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David, any questions or discussion? All right, motion, uh, motion, uh, it's my last vote as a chair, and I can't even get it right. All those in favor say aye. Oh my goodness, after four years, you think it just come off like rattled it. Okay, so next board meeting is Monday, January eighth, it's Elvis's birthday and my anniversary, so we'll all be celebrating together. I'll be in this room when we have going on the night. Some activity, okay, so, and then following that conclusion of that meeting is facilities and transportation, so. Um, again, we're gonna have, um, well, we'll have to do our reorganization in January, so. Everybody be thinking about, um, you know, if there's leadership positions that you want, we can start, um, kinda talking about that a little bit. Um, other than that, uh, everybody have a very merry Christmas, enjoy your families and your time, and, uh. We'll see each other in the new year, and we have six thirty-eight, meeting is adjourned.